Welcome everybody to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of June the 25th, 2024. Again, this is a hybrid public meeting, so members of the public and members of the board are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, we are at the Norton Public Library this evening. And to join online via Zoom, there is a Zoom link available in the meeting agenda, or the meeting ID is 638-929-1060, the same one it's been for 4.4 plus years. There's also a phone number available should you wish to dial in by phone directly. So with that out of the way, we'll dive into our agenda this evening in terms of planning board business and policies. We do have one item which I'll discuss at the end of the agenda from my perspective, so I'm going to put that at the end. In terms of bills and warrants, we do have... Brian, did you want to pass around the bills that we have just for different things? These are related to... Yeah, I get it. So we have... These are sign-offs for the Community Planning Grant that we have been doing for the zoning recodification. So those are all tied into this packet of documents here. If you would like to take a look, please feel free. But that is all from a grant, it is not coming out of our general fund or anything like that. Okay? And we do not have any minutes to approve in this session, so let's skip that one. And the final item in the top section of our agenda is a selection of a planning board member to the Elm Street Sewer Project Working Group. Paul, did you want to give a quick introduction, just what they're looking to do?
Yeah, so we're... Thank you Chair, we're looking to just create a working group made up of representatives of different boards that have an interest in both Elm Street Sewer and the former Reeden-Barton site. As we're going to have a vote at town meeting for funding of the balance of funds for the sewer project in October, we just felt it was a good idea to get boards talking together, talking with each other and aligning on a very important topic. And so what we've asked is for each board to appoint one person. So we've got the Planning Board, Economic Development Commission, Select Board, Finance Committee, and Water and Sewer Committee. Each have a rep and get a chance to talk, meet with each other and with staff, and then would report back to their respective boards. Again, just focused on, you know, this critical decision. And of course, the Planning Board has a significant role in this. In fact, about two... A few years ago, remember, the board recommended changing the zoning from industrial to village, commercial. And of course, any project that comes forward, any future development will go through this board. And then finally, redeveloping that site is a priority listed in our master plan, which the prior board recommended for, and was recommended at town meeting.
So again, this is to... It boards talking ahead of fall town meeting, which seems like it's going to be long.
The town meeting or leading up to town meeting?
Both.
Both, yes.
So we don't need... Is there a date that this committee is looking to meet at this point in terms of a deadline?
We don't have it set yet, but sooner than later. And like EDC, they're going to appoint someone tomorrow night. We're also on the agenda for Select Board and FINCOM at their upcoming meetings. And I don't know about Water and Sewer, but I've asked that.
EDC is not going to have one tomorrow?
Okay.
I just got the message.
Okay.
So...
Soon enough.
So in theory, we should try and select somebody to serve on this committee, either this meeting or next meeting, so...
For tonight?
So is there anybody who is interested in being the planning board representative for this committee?
I live... I mean, if anybody else wants to do it, that's cool too, but I live right there. I go canoeing on the river right up there. I'm pretty close to it. If anybody else is interested in it, I could try to take the EDC position.
Laura raised her hand as well.
Yeah, I actually just had a fairly lengthy conversation with Paul about a week ago about some ideas that I had and wished I could get somebody from Water and Sewer to talk to me, so.
So...
Does that mean you want to do it?
We don't need to make this an official vote. If you two want to rock, paper, scissors?
No, motion to nominate Laura.
Okay.
Second.
That's fine. Any further... We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of nominating Laura Parker to the committee? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that out of the way, we'll dive into the different applications listed on our posted agenda. The first one is a continuation of the remand hearing for 280 Newton Avenue. So we have the applicant here, we have town council here to speak to the nature of the remand if we need. But I know they had submitted some additional documentation around the Dover amendment, the educational aspects of the property. So I'll let the applicant go forward, you can present those materials, anything else that you'd like to start.
Sure, thank you Mr. Cannon. Edward Cannon on behalf of Amigo.
Excuse me, Tim.
Sure.
Sorry, Robin Stein, Town Council. Before you get started, would you mind just introducing all the board members that are here tonight, so anyone watching or volley can...
Sure, so...
Five left, thank you.
So members of the board who are all here in person. Sorry, so everybody's in person tonight, Robin. Do you want me to still introduce everybody?
Okay. Uh, no, I mean, it would just be helpful because I can't see everyone, that's why I was asking. I can only see like Tim and you.
So there's myself, Tim Griffin, who's the chair.
Just you, actually.
Yeah. So myself, Tim Griffin is the chair, Eric Norris, Jim Arts.
Rob Welsh.
Steve Warsholm.
Laura Parker.
Howard Boy.
Okay. There we go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Edward Cannon on behalf of Amigo, joined tonight by Andy Armington, Director of Facilities, and also asked to join us tonight Bethany McCann, who is the Chief Operating Officer of Amigo. If I may briefly, Mr. Chairman, Bethany has been in the human services field for over 25 years. She began her career providing direct services in residential and school settings. She holds a master's degree in severe special needs from Simmons College and a law degree from New England Law, Boston. Throughout her career, Bethany has held a variety of roles supporting children and families affected by autism and related disorders. She also serves as a clerk for the Council of Autism Service Providers, CASP. So we did provide a number of materials, Mr. Chairman, the sort of Amigo parent handbook, as well as some sample individual service plans, redacted. And so I thought it would be helpful, rather than sort of drag the board through each of those materials. I also submitted a memorandum, which I know Town Council always hopes that they're going to take a look at, but I thought it might be most instructive if the board had sort of particular questions about the academic aspects of the residential communities. Bethany is the most qualified person to be able to give some guidance on those, so we're prepared to answer any of those questions.
Okay. Do we have any additional, I'll say, questions for Mr. Cannon here before we dive into that? If you don't mind, I don't know if you want to see the podium and ask her to come forward just to...
Absolutely.
In terms of... So thank you for joining us this evening. I think the questions that the board had were in terms of looking at this from a... We initially looked at this as, this is a residential structure, this is their homes. And it wasn't presented to us as, this is an educational facility. So kind of understanding what the educational aspects are of the program for the residents there would be great to hear some details from you.
So in our residential group homes, we do a lot of teaching. We teach life skills, how to take care of themselves. We teach vocational skills, skills that they need as they can go out hopefully and get jobs and be productive members of society. We also teach sort of, I would call them social skills, but it's more like friend skills, how to get along with people, neighborhood skills, how to walk across the street, how to go to the store, how to get by something, you know, like a... How to make a grocery list, how to do a... If not all of our folks are able, they can do grocery budgets, they can plan meals, buy groceries based on that, all sorts of different... It depends on the composition of the folks. So it's a pretty broad spectrum.
Yeah. Obviously, you don't know what programs would be at this facility until you know who is actually living there.
Right, it's just, in general, that's what we do across the board, is we're constantly teaching. We're teaching skills that maybe you or I might inherently know how to do, or the children who don't have a diagnosis of autism, we might inherently know how to do it. But a lot of the people for whom we have the pleasure of providing services for, they truly have to be taught it little by little by little, broken down into little steps.
Additional questions for you?
Well, I do have a bit of a question. So at no point is there the residents to themselves, there will always be an on-duty person. So would this qualify as a long-term care facility, like a hospital or a nursing home?
Not ever in my experience have they ever qualified as that, no.
How common is for these facilities to be classified as schools? I'm familiar with a lot of these type of facilities. I'm not aware of them being classified as schools, though, this is new to me.
I've never not had them classified as schools, so I don't have an answer for that question, I'm sorry. I've worked at a few different places that are residential, and I've never not had them be classified as that.
It's just, it's new to me with all my dealings, this is deluded me.
Yeah, I... You know, it's like perspective, you know, point of reference. But I've been in the field for a long time, so I...
No, I understand, I have autistic members of the family I work for, so I'm closer to the programs.
Yeah, isn't it not?
Just haven't seen that.
Okay.
It's probably just...
But to continue with that sort of, whether it's a educational facility or like a long-term care facility, you guys are still applying only as a duplex? And that is something I'm kind of, like, are we applying the wrong thing for this permit? Should it fall under a long-term care facility or... Like, I feel like an educational facility, although this may qualify, is generally students come and go. I don't know if it's like permanently in place, because if you need nurses on duty at all time, that implies it's a, like a nursing facility, a convalescent home of some sort?
Not all of our facilities have nurses on duties at all time. There's actually only two.
But this one is.
This one will, like you said.
Staff not necessarily a nurse, but yeah.
Right, staff.
Are they nursing staff or are they teachers? Like, they might be qualified as both, but is it a nursing primarily? Are they there as a nursing staff? Are they changing diapers and that kind of stuff, like?
We... One of the things that we teach actually is basic skills like toilet training and things like that, so that's an actual life skill that we teach. So it really depends on the composition of the people that live there.
At this facility, will there be medication administered?
There's medication administered across the board.
That's correct.
Yes.
So is that part of a medical facility then?
So there's this...
If there's a doctor on site?
Once you have a certification, you don't have to be a nurse to administer medication. You just have to go through a training per regulation, right, depending on... As long as you administer it under the guise of, under supervision of a nurse, under the supervision of a nurse, and you have completed specific training, you don't have to be a nurse to administer medication. A lot of people that we serve, when we say administer medication, it could be something as simple as Tylenol.
Sure.
It could be something more significant, and it could be anything in between. Could be diabetes, I mean, really, it could be anything.
But are there medical things going on that would be beyond what a school nurse would administer?
Without knowing who's going to live there, I can't answer that question.
Okay, I'm just kind of like, because it's just...
I understand where you're trying to go, it's just like, it's like a...
I don't think that you're not doing an educational portion.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, but that's not also what the permit is for. And I am curious about whether it's a medical facility.
Tim, would it be help?
I'd like to hear your question. Yes, please.
Go ahead, Robin.
We'd like to hear your question.
Sure. Oh, I just, I was just going to ask if maybe it would be helpful if I kind of talk about the law component of this.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna circle back to that.
If you'd like me to.
I was gonna circle back to that and just speak to...
Okay.
So just to, not to drag you too far into the zoning weeds here.
Right, well, the zoning weeds, I have to turn it over to Ted.
But the reason that we're talking about that is that educational facilities are part of what's called the Dover Amendment for mass state law. So they have different... We apply different standards to things under the Dover Amendment than we do for things that are not. So that's why the questions about education and what does this qualify for are kind of why we ask the questions and obviously why they call to you.
Yes.
So... So to speak to that, I'm not sure if Paul or Robin, if you wanted just to speak to... Robin, to your point, kind of what the legal aspects you were trying to speak to?
Sure, I thought it might just be helpful, this is Robin Stein, Town Council of KP Law, just to give a high-level summary of how the Dover Amendment works relative to education uses. The term has been broadly interpreted by courts and routinely covers, you know, congregate residential facilities where education is primary or dominant purpose, supporting individuals such as these, that may also have other components, you know, of the use. But the type of life skills and what have you that are being described, in my opinion, is consistent with how the Dover Amendment has interpreted, or I'm sorry, how the courts have interpreted what a Dover Amendment education use is. That said, ultimately, the question in the first instance for the town won't be formally decided until there's an application to the building commissioner, because the building commissioner, in my opinion, is the zoning enforcement officer. And so while the question is being put to the planning board because the applicant is chosen to apply for the special permit, it's an unusual approach, in my opinion, and so ultimately, you know, the building commissioner will make that decision when they're presented with a building permit application. I have had informal conversations, and I know Paul has as well, with your building commissioner, who, based on the initial information he had received, I think at this point is comfortable that this would likely be a Dover Amendment use, but he won't make that determination formally until he receives a building permit application. But in my opinion, it would not be unreasonable for this board to consider this a Dover Amendment use. You know, I'm not exactly sure why the applicant is seeking a special permit if they're claiming to be a Dover Amendment use, so they're not going straight to the building commissioner, but they've put the application to you, and, you know, should you be comfortable that this is likely to be treated as a Dover Amendment use, you are, you can, through this application that they've put in front of you, you know, able to regulate the, kind of the dimensional aspects, you know, of the use. But, you know, it's not really before you as a duplex, it's before you as a Dover use. You know, maybe the applicant can speak to that a little bit, but, you know, normally we see these just as building permit applications.
So to your point, Robin, is that the applicant is asking us for relief under the special permit, which they may not ultimately need?
Yeah.
Okay.
And not, I mean, traditionally, we don't see special permits for Dover Amendment uses, we just see building permit applications, but, you know, if this applicant's asking for it, I don't see why you can't grant it. But I do think conceptually, the type of services they're providing, a court would likely agree a Dover, but it's not ultimately, in my opinion, that matters, you know, your building commissioner is your zoning enforcement officer, and so when he gets a building permit application, he'll make that final call. But I think it's reasonable for your purposes with this application before you to treat it as a Dover use, and I think Nick would agree with that.
Thank you.
No further question, that's why she's here. With the laws...
Yeah, and to that end, I know at the last meeting, you had talked about a potential, you know, condition if you grant this that keeps the use of the duplex, you know, within Dover. So if a property is sold someday and somebody just wants to see that as a two-family, that would be a change in use, they would need to get any additional necessary zoning relief or come back or what have you.
That makes sense. And we did have one potential question for you as well.
Yeah. Just came up the last meeting. If this was declared a school or an educational facility, does that become a school zone around
So that's something that you'd want to ask your police chief, but there is a difference between a school and what's considered a nonprofit educational facility under zoning purposes. So there's a lot of uses like this in community all over Massachusetts, and it hasn't been that experienced that those would all require a school zone, but, I mean, that's something I think that you would want to talk with either VPW or the Police Department about. But there isn't a difference between something being educational under zoning and something being a school, in my opinion.
Thank you. Okay.
So... Could I get like a legal clarification on whether this counts as a medical facility at all, or if the educational aspect of it supersedes the special permit criteria for a, like convalescent home or nursing facility type situation?
Sure. So Robin, the question is if, does the Dover Amendment qualified use, assuming that that's the termination we make, would that override any other uses happening at the property for us to classify it under the proper zoning use tables? Basically, if it's Dover, it doesn't matter what else it has going on.
So it's hard for, you know, it... Well, so it's only going to have really one use, and it's hard for me to answer that question because again, ultimately, your zoning enforcement officer makes the initial call on zoning. But, you know, sometimes uses have, you know, overlapping uses, but as presented, I, again, I think it's reasonable that it's fair to treat this as a Dover educational use, and it wouldn't really be up to this board to decide that, you know, it really should be more of a medical use or what have you. Ultimately, that's a question, you know, for Nick, but there are certainly many examples of residential programs in the community teaching life skills and other things like that to different classes of individuals that do qualified Dover Amendment uses.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, I think, Steve?
Fair enough.
Okay. So...
Is there a way to grant them or allow them to do this without making it Dover, without calling it a school and an educational facility?
I mean...
I understand that's a difficult...
I feel like that's my issue. I feel like I want to call it a school. I feel like I don't feel comfortable doing it as a...
But it kind of does affect what they want to do.
And if they apply as a school, I don't have to give permission or not, but I have the public asking me not to do this.
So the... This was before the board, it wasn't presented as Dover, and it failed. It is here on remand back from the courts as a Dover use, which was not presented before. So this is... What we have in front of us right now is a Dover use, in theory, of this property. As Town Counselors said, Dover uses often don't need a special permit. The applicant could choose to say, "I will withdraw the special permit without prejudice and proceed with just a building permit," and we stop talking about it.
I would like to do that.
That's something that they could certainly do if they want. If they ask us to rule on the special permit relief that they've presented, then we have to pick one fork or the other. I think that would be the... Yeah.
Knowing that the court's already granted them the Dover status.
In other towns, yes. So I think, do we have any additional... Obviously, we have the operations officer here to speak to any other educational aspects of it. We've talked to that at length. Is there anything else that you want to ask her before Mr. Cannon jumps back here? Okay?
If I may briefly, Mr. Chairman, I do thank Tony Stein for that analysis. I didn't get involved until the appeal period, but I can say that at the initial application, Amigo's thought was, "Let's make it a public forum, let's solicit input, and let's do it in a manner that is collaborative and allows the town to impose reasonable restrictions consistent with the Dover Amendment." That was the intent of why it was done in this particular fashion, is sort of many ways to skin a cat.
All right, with one of the main concerns from the abutters that I got was the invasion of property and also being nude in appropriate settings with some of the residents before. What are the procedures or protocols you guys are going to have in place moving forward? Knowing that you still don't know, like, if there is a problem resident, is there something that they will be relocated if there's issues like that, or is that something that they're housed there, they're housed there, that's it?
We actually have done those things before. We have moved people if it wasn't a good fit.
Right, so if there's issues with the abutters, that issues are taking place, you guys aren't going to turn a deaf ear to what's going on?
We are actually, we... Our goal is to be a good neighbor to everybody that we're neighbors to. I mean, we're constantly, that's what we want to be, is a good neighbor. We want to have our yards look nice, we want to have our houses look nice, we want to have our staff be respectful, we want to have our folks that were lucky enough to serve be respectful of the community. We want to be good neighbors.
You're saying if you had a problem resident, you move them. Where'd they go?
It depends, right? Like, so, it depends.
Like, it's just another home like this?
It could be, it could be, yeah.
So a person who is a problem resident in a home in another town, they decide to relocate and we could wind up getting them down here in Norton just as easily?
That's...
It's a really hypothetical question, that would be hard for me to even like...
No, but it was just following the logic of what you said.
We really try to be good neighbors, so if there's a particular set of neighbors that have a particular set of things that are of high concern to them, we try very hard to listen to them and within reason, within their construct.
I think you do. Yeah, I'm not questioning that.
It's just that, you know, if it was...
Yeah. When you said you... I saw, oh, so there's a whole, you know, and that's what I...
We want it to be a forever home for our people, right? Like, that's the best that we can, but we are certainly, like I said, we really try to work with people all around us to make sure the neighbors feel safe, that everybody's copacetic, if you will.
There have been some anecdotes shared in previous sessions, which were less than positive.
Right.
About previous inhabitants of this property. So just, that's the frame of reference that I think some of the members of the public are looking at this proposal with, so. Not saying that that is what will happen here, just saying that is the frame of reference that a lot of the neighbors do have, so.
Thank you for the point of reference.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just also to Mr. Arts, one of the suggestions that this board had at our last meeting was to enclose the facility with a fence, which you'll see has been added to most residence like Glenn, to address, you know, just that, or to help address it, obviously, in a more comprehensive manner is doing exactly what Bethany just suggested, but a more concrete way is to do that to help keep them in the proposed
Do you have any additional questions for Mr. Cannon related to the site plan or any of the other materials? And I do see the hand raised in the meeting, so I'll get to you in just a second. Mr. Cannon, to you, I think you've heard the discussion about the zoning relief specifically that we were talking about, and you've heard Town Council's feeling about what she feels is necessary for you to proceed. Would you like us to proceed with the special permit discussions at this point?
I would, I think it's helpful for the community. I think it's helpful to have a public forum, and I also think it's helpful for the town to be able to impose, you know, reasonable restrictions consistent with the Dover Amendment, which sometimes doesn't happen if you just simply bypass a public forum and go directly to the building expectancy. So I do think it's appropriate in this setting, and, you know, I understand the history of this particular application, where we are now, in light of Town Council's guidance, I do think it would be appropriate for this building. I think we'll also have the building commissioner in his job.
So if you don't mind, I'll ask any members of the public, have any additional comments they'd like to make? I do see Mr. Havens on the... Um, I do see, uh, Mr. Havens on the Zoom meeting with his, the hand raised. If you'd like to just unmute and introduce yourself with, uh, your name and address, please. And anybody in person who'd like to come and speak, if you'd like to, uh, just start making your way towards the podium for, uh, the next spot. Thank you. Sir?
And did you need any introduction as far as, other than, obviously you have a, like a name there for my end, far as where I reside or anything like that, thank you?
Yes, I would just say your, your name and address, please, sir.
James Havens on that 20 Meadowbrook Lane, um, right down from the, um.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, the question I had was just, yep, welcome. Yeah, the question I had, and it had been raised before, you know, when this was a non-Dover, um, approach for facility. Just looking to clarify, um, at this point, the size of the staff and the size of, uh, members or the clients that would be housed there. And again, uh, one of our biggest concerns is just the parking. And in fact, sounds like, at least from the original curb designs, that if the parking was larger, um, it would actually accommodate the size of the staff better and, you know, eliminate any congestion concerns in that very narrow spot there. But again, I don't know if the staff or member size has changed, and that's it.
No, yeah. As far as, there have been no changes to the staff or residence size. And we did touch on parking in our last session. And they've stated that all vehicles will be parked on the site and nothing should be parked on Meadowbrook.
Yeah, and that certainly meets with, you know, the, the concern that we had. Um, again, as long as there, there was enough parking spots there for, um, staff and when they have the big, the larger group meetings, um, where, you know, you have all available shifts that show up for those, um, particular times. And I, again, I don't know if those are once a month. Do they run less? Not sure. But that's when we really ran into the congestion there.
I, I believe they stated in the prior sessions that those group meetings would generally be held at a different site with the news layout.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Did you have anything else, sir?
I did not at this time.
Thank you. I'm just gonna turn around here and see if there's anybody here in person?
Yes.
Sir? And I do see another hand raised in the meeting, so I will try to go to you next, sir.
Uh, Zach Light, uh, 280, uh, Taunton Ave, Director Butter. And, um, just a concern still, um, you know, about the speed limit and, um, how fast it is on that, traveled on that road. It's, it's, it's crazy. It, um, it's the highest posted speed limit in that area. Um, there is a fence that's already around it, that's always been around it. So this doesn't seem to be stopping those things from happening. They're still getting out, um, and crossing into 140, um, which is very dangerous. Uh, and now that we're going to essentially double, we're going from five rooms to 10 rooms. When there was 10 kids, now there's probably gonna be 20, because you're gonna have double up in each room and things like that. So that's my assumption. Um, the, again, with the Dover Act, um, I think that, you know, obviously that's the loophole, um, that, that we're looking here. And it has to come back to education. Yet they said that they were leaving during the day from eight to three to do their education somewhere else. But then we're gonna come back and it's a boarding house at the end of the day. So, um, it's, I don't know how that plays in, how, your eyes thought, this is just my thought. Um, that's, that's how they get away with, um, but again, that, that speed limit is very dangerous. And I, I can just see a lot of people going out there, like my boy, Ian Wiggins back there. Every, my heart stops every time he's walking down Main Street and down Mansfield Ave. I gotta pick him up all the time. And I'll say, hey, let's, uh, get in the car, let's be safe. Um, but this is, uh, this is even higher, higher speed limit over there. And, uh, it's dangerous. So, um, I'd like to keep that, uh, keep that in the forefront. Um, there, and there's, um, also, again, my property is, there's adjudication right there. And that's gonna go, uh, it has to be done by 2026, but it's in the Superior Courts, um, about property. And, um, and from what we're being told, it's, uh, we got, we got a pretty solid case to, to win that. So, um, we've got, uh, going back many, many, many years, over 20 plus years of, uh, affidavits signed by every, off from property owner there. So, um, thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And also in the Zoom meeting, I see the hand raised if the name says Ted Mar- Marvel or Marvell. Uh, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, uh, Ted Marvel, 38 Meadowbrook Lane, uh, Norton. Uh, just a, uh, a few comments here. Uh, so since the, uh, last time we were in here, uh, to talk about this, um, we never heard in that meeting one time that this was an educational facility. Uh, so it seems like they found a workaround to come back again, calling it an educational facility through this Dover Act or whatever it's called. So we still oppose it. Um, I think it's gonna be a mess at the end of our road. Meadowbrook Lane is a private way. It's gonna have an effect on our private way. Uh, the congestion there and how they might change the, um, end of our road. Again, it's a private way. Uh, the, a butter, uh, across the street parking line comes right across the end of that road. So they're gonna be doing work on someone else's land, actually. Uh, because the, the, the road is not laid out bound or anything like that. So we're concerned with that, with the changes that might happen there. Uh, and all the other reasons, we don't need to go through again. You heard them in the first meeting, uh, when it was turned down. So again, we're, we are opposed to this, especially where, you know, it is under a, uh, special permit. We don't think it should be allowed, uh, in our zone. And we have, we have a lot of constraints. You heard them before. I won't go through it all again. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if you can just, if you don't mind lowering your virtual hand there in the meeting, that will save the small, small to medium OCD part of my brain. Thank you.
I have a big OCD part, so.
Okay. And I'll turn around again. Anybody else here in the meeting? Okay. Uh, any members of the board have additional questions for Mr. Cannon or anybody else from Amigo here? They don't believe it. Yep, it came back. Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant here? Okay. So if we are not able, if we don't have any additional questions for the applicant, uh, Mr. Cannon, if you don't mind, just coming back up, I'm gonna go into my.
Tim.
Yes?
I just, there was one other issue I didn't know if the board wanted to discuss with the applicant. Obviously, the planning board's not gonna decide property disputes, but there is this adverse possession issue out there. And I, I don't know, and if the board wants to discuss. I mean, obviously, this application is for this property. It's currently constituted.
Sure.
I'm not familiar enough with what's in dispute to know if, depending on the outcome of that case, it's gonna potentially create other zoning issues for where this building is sited. I don't know if that's something you want to ask about or account for. But it was mentioned, so I did want to mention it.
Yes. This has been, this was discussed a prior session. Uh, it would, if it, depending on the outcome, I believe it could change the site plan that is presented to us because there'd be a smaller site and there'd probably be changes required in terms of setbacks and et cetera, et cetera. Um, my understanding is that the building commit, because the case has already been filed, the building commissioner wouldn't necessarily proceed on a, a permit where the land under it was in dispute. So I was viewing any action that we take would be, obviously, wait for any of the other adjudication to be finalized before anything actually broke around.
So.
And if, and if.
That may not necessarily be the case.
Okay.
And so, you know, you may just want to account in the decision to be clear that if this is approved, it's for this law is constituted. And that if the law changes as a result of that case, that it's going to potentially require a return trip to this board and any other zoning relief that is needed as a consequence. I think it's just fair to put everyone on notice. So there's no confusion about it later. And that can just be incorporated, you know, language to that effect. That can be incorporated in the decision, but I, you know, I think it's in everyone's best interest to be clear about that upfront.
Yeah. I, I think that we've been clear about that in discussion with the applicant and they know that, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Cannon, that is perfectly reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, so Mr. Cannon, the, if the board has no further question for your team, I think the question that I have to you is if there is anything else that you would like us, if you are before other boards, if there is anything else that you would like us to wait on prior to closing the public hearing in any, in any way?
No, Mr. Cannon. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come back on the remed. Thank you for the time. Last meeting, this meeting to listen to what we have to say, to review the materials. And we appreciate this opportunity.
Okay. Thank you.
A motion to close the public hearing for special permit 20946. Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Rob is the second. Rob is the second.
Okay. You?
You were the second, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Okay. So the public hearing is now closed. So we will not take into account any additional evidence from the applicant or any other parties. Are members amenable to move forward with the decision related to this application at this time? Related to the special permit requested? Or would you like to do that in a later session?
Before I make a motion to approve, um, I'm gonna do our standing conditions and working on the language that town council is just specifying. Something such as if the lot size has changed in future, modify, in the future, modifications to the site or special permit modifications may be required. Does that make sense? I can say a better.
The permit is granted based on the site constituted in the attached site plan, which I assume would be attached. Changes to the site plan, which affects setbacks or other zoning regulations may require the applicant to reappear at, at, relative boards for, for rules.
No, so unconditional parking on Meadowbrook.
Yeah, no one has to be there. Concerned parking doesn't look at it, but to me, yeah, it's.
Because there's no residents who actually have vehicles, it's.
I know.
Yeah.
But I was looking at shift change. There's like, people have to move out of spaces, let the other people park. They'll be jockeying the cars. I, I, in my opinion, things like that break down over time.
They have stated that it is sufficient parking for their needs.
I agree. I agree.
And it meets the zoning requirements.
And then they can put vehicles on the grass. They, they were saying that they put the buses over the grass.
All right, just on the, I think the left side of the driveway, but yeah. First. Okay. Are there any additional conditions that we wanted to discuss prior to motions? We talked about parking, um, you know, standard, standard construction hours. Any conditions?
What about the, uh, group?
And I believe you are gonna include a Dover condition?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. At last meeting, somebody had brought up they wanted it to be some sort of an alarm when someone's getting out. And especially if someone's getting out of that fence, that an alarm on the gate, you know, some sort of system to notify people when some, when something opens, that seemed prudent to me, too.
It was beyond that purview.
Huh?
Sounds beyond that purview to me.
It was just something that the abutters were asking for in the last meeting, get down what they wanted.
Yeah.
And they want group meetings not to take place there, though.
Yeah, I think that was something that the applicant said they didn't plan to have.
Yeah.
Because they don't have the bigger building there.
Yeah, so maybe that.
And they have the facility in, in Alvera by Stop and Shop.
Correct. So there shouldn't be a problem putting that in?
Then you get into what is a group meeting?
Suddenly, there's a problem putting that in.
Okay. I don't know. It's, we've already stated they're gonna park everybody there. So if they're creating a situation where they can't park.
Answer my question. We can go on.
Yeah. Is there anything else that we wanted to do, include as potential conditions?
A motion to approve special permit 20946 with our standard conditions and also that this is a Dover Amendment use. Second condition being no parking on Meadowbrook Lane. And third, using the language as we've discussed, if the lot size is changing in the future, modifications to a special permit may be required.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Thank you, Eric.
Tim, I'm sorry, could you, could you just repeat the conditions? It's a little bit hard to hear out on the Zoom.
Sure. The first condition was the Dover condition. Second was no parking on Meadowbrook Lane, which is the private way directly adjacent to the property. And the third was related, speaking to your wording, related to the, um, adverse possession.
Adverse possession.
Related to a portion of the site.
And was there just a fourth with your standard construction conditions?
Yes. And, yeah, standard conditions, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? And the motion, is it in the affirmative, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed. Steve and Rob. And any extensions? Okay. So the vote is five to two. So the motion passes for the special permit relief. So we'll work on it, rate the decision, and we'll have that to review in our next session. Thank you very much, everybody who attended. We were virtually in person, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda this evening. Robin, I believe you are ready to go.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Paul. Connect with you later. Have a good night, everyone.
You, too.
Good night.
Okay. The next app, next item on our agenda this evening is 360 South Worcester Street. Uh, this is again a continuation from a prior session. Um, so updates since our last session, which was, I think, about a month ago for this project.
I think I need to recuse.
Yeah, we have two people who need to recuse, yes. So Alan, you're accusing as well?
Yes.
Um, so Paul has included a letter from Foxborough Town Manager, basically saying that they haven't had any issues with the, uh, the applicant in Foxborough. Um, and I believe, uh, earlier this week, we did receive the traffic study, which highlighted speeds traveled on, around the site and stated that the sightlines provided to the site based on the speed were adequate. So I'll, uh, didn't mean to steal your thunder here, but if there's anything else, if you'd like to just introduce yourself again and, uh, providing additional updates for the board.
Sure. Michael Titor for Civil and Bar Mill Consultants on behalf of the applicant. So again, as a refresher, talking about 360 South Worcester Street, proposed warehouse use for a moving company. So it's a low-impact kind of industrial use on the property. So as you mentioned, we did provide a speed study. We did it on two locations on South Worcester Street, kind of focusing around Home Market Foods. So one didn't share.
Different document?
Yeah, different screen. There it goes. So.
Now, one spot was right on that blue dot and one's over the other blue dot, yeah.
Correct. So we focused on two other sides of Home Market Foods. Mainly for the focus of, from the majority of the trucks pulling Home Market Foods, I think we should be turning left, so we want to get either side of that situation. So based off of what we received in the speed study, about the 85th percentile of what's driving down the road is about 40 miles an hour. That's about five miles over the posted speed limit. So it's not, it's, as everyone's expect, it's above what's posted, but it's not crazy above what's expected.
So. There are certain, and there's 15% of people who are going above 3940, which is also. which is also a problem.
Correct. So based off that, we did run sightline analysis, as you mentioned. So we did the analysis not only for the posted speed limit, but also that eighty-fifth percentile number. Both values, the higher value, the eighty-fifth percentile, we required a sightline distance around, I believe it's four hundred and ninety feet. We exceed that, we have sightlines over five hundred feet on this project. So, and then following up on a question from one of the board members at the last meeting, the hazardous materials, the applicant did not point out storing hazardous materials on site.
Taking you back just to the sightline question, do you have any proposed plantings that are in, in or near the sightlines?
There are plantings proposed towards the front. They're red maple trees, so you'd be looking under the canopy.
Am I, I'm assuming that you're amenable to a condition that would require regular trimming of any vegetation to, within this? Within the site, what do we call those, site triangles?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have additional questions for the applicant here, based on the materials from the last session or the materials that they provided in preparation for this evening's session?
Yeah. I don't know if this is in our purview to require or request, or if you're willing to amend to it. Would you be willing to put, like, rumble bumps, uh, the speed bump rumble strip sort of thing on, across the road to prevent cars from speeding?
Uh, on South Worcester Street?
Yeah.
I don't thi, I mean, that would be a town question. I have a hard time thinking that they would do that.
The residents would have an opinion.
Okay. No, I don't, I don't think that would, I don't think that, I think that the, I won't speak for all of the butters, but I think the challenge is that it's a relatively narrow road with, with this, with the Whole Market Foods there, a relatively high volume of bigger truck traffic. And those two together tend to not play well.
Although I have to admit, the speed came in significantly lower than I expected it to. At the eighty-fifth percentile.
I think that fifteen percentile, the fifteen percent of people who are driving down the road are not, uh, it's not a normal distribution.
No.
My feeling is that there's eighty-five percent of people who are forty and under, even though it's a thirty-five zone. And then there's other people, it's probably not a lot of forty-five, there's probably up to the fifties and higher after that.
Yeah, I, I was expecting it to come in significantly higher.
Yeah.
It was also interesting.
I'm disappointed.
Rob, just, I know you're trying, but because you've recused yourself, I'll ask you to just wait.
I know, I'm helping, man.
No. If you're going to be troubled, then you have to come up and speak. So we're gonna, we'll, okay. Okay. Additional questions for the applicant?
Yes, please, and thank you. Are you done, I'm sorry?
I got one more, but you can sit.
No, go ahead.
Additionally, uh, there's a massive wetlands area in the back that you're not going to be using. It, it, it goes up to a parcel of land owned by Massachusetts. It connects to our waterways, a few trailheads. And would you be willing to put a public access over the area outside of your facility?
I would have to talk with the applicant about that one. So as of right now, I'm not proposing anything outside of this, but I'd have to speak to him on something like that.
Is there, outside of public access, is there a proposal in any way for conservation restriction on the rest of the land?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay. And whether, there's six different flavors of conservation restrictions, so I'm, okay.
All right.
Did we determine where the trucks are going to be registered, please?
Um, I'd have to confirm with the applicant. I don't have that answer. Ideally, they'd be registered with the property, but I don't have that confirmation.
Okay. I believe we did ask for that in the last session. Can you remind us if this is a relocation or an expansion of your existing facility?
This is planned to be a relocation.
Okay. And I'm not asking specifically why this site, but why Norton?
I don't specifically have that answer from the applicant, but this is the location they had chosen.
Okay. Did Concom issue their order of conditions as expected?
Yes.
And did we determine, somebody had a question about what the breakdown of the percentages of moving versus storage. Did we get that?
It's a varying number. There's not a fixed percentage. Majority is pure moving.
Okay.
So there's not a fixed number to that.
Uh, the only other question they had, and it's actually more for the planner, please. I did not realize there is another, it's small, but there's an industrial use in between these two properties, three seventy South Worcester. When I searched, it looks like there's two different businesses running on there. Do we get similar complaints from neighbors about them as we do for Whole Market Foods?
Uh, my recollection from our, when we met a month ago, it was primarily Whole Market. I don't recall hearing anything. And I, I don't recall hearing anything at Town Hall, but again, the health agent deals with that, but certainly we hear the concerns about Whole Market.
Yeah, I didn't even realize, I happened to look at something and said, there's another property there.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm kind of hoping to, you know, present.
It's got fenced by it.
Yeah, that there's the capability of being a perfectly good neighbor on that stretch is what I'm hoping to.
I understand the thought process.
I was very surprised at the, this isn't a question, it's more of a comment, that the, um, you can see a very marked difference in the number of automobiles along the front of this particular location versus Whole Market Foods. The, the difference between West Hanning de Gafney versus Woodward was significantly different. It's two hundred and twelve cars going past Whole Market Foods on any given day.
They're not supposed to go down Woodward, they're supposed to go down and then over.
Yeah, no, this is on, this is on South Worcester.
Yeah.
Specifically, but if you look at the.
Woodward's the one up to the left, yeah. They're not supposed to go that way.
Yeah. Table one in the data summary, it was marked, marked difference in, and it's specific, you can tell it's specifically driven by Whole Market Foods. So when the butters say it's two hundred trucks daily, they're not even slightly exaggerating.
Yeah. Deary, they should go out the site, go down to John Scott, not to one forty.
Yeah.
So.
So, you know, while I'm, I'm very, I'm very sympathetic to the neighbors and their complaints and I, we've been hearing about issues with Whole Market Foods for quite a while. I, I, I do kind of feel the project is being viewed through the lens of Whole Market Foods, which probably is not fair. They could end up being a very quiet exemplary neighbor and.
We can never know until we.
I know. I, I think.
Not saying anything to.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
Yes. You can never know one way.
It is an entirely different line of business.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, Paul, if you don't mind, just to speak to this again, I know we touched on it a little bit in the last session, but the applicant is presenting an industrial zone as kind of as of right use. And the relief that they're seeking for the special permit is tied just to the size of the building and the property and the parking requirement, correct?
Correct. And there's also a waiver on a driveway, one of the driveways. Right, there's, you're, you will eventually vote on those three. So the special permit for a building over ten thousand square feet, site plan over twenty-five hundred, then the waiver on the industrial driveway with, for the employee parking lot.
And in terms of, we dealt with this a little bit with some of the other applications that we've seen recently, but from an as of right use perspective, the board should be looking at, other aspects of the application, the board should be looking at specifically in terms of granting this relief, given that it's an as of right use.
Well, certainly. And, and some of the issues, like what we hear with, you know, with, with Whole Market and some other similar uses around town, with truck traffic in the locations, you do have the ability to require signage to say whether the trucks can turn left or right, or that they can only turn that way and direct them, just like we have with our later item today, Main Street, you had directed us to provide a specific route to get them to a major roadway and minimize the number of residences that they can pass by. You can do that here, too. So those are things that you can factor in. I know, you know, one of the concerns that the neighbors have with the noise, a lot of that from Whole Market comes from, you know, rooftop refrigeration units and trucks and whatnot. But I think the applicant at their last meeting addressed that. And that maybe something, it's a condition, could put in?
I think they said that it would be like air conditioning for the office space generally. And the hours of operation that we had stated in the last session were relatively consistent with, I want to call them standard office hours, we would have an extension. So that would be, and they weren't going to have any refrigerated trucks.
Correct.
So they wouldn't be moving somebody.
Excuse me, we may want to, we may want to find out whether they require, or they're going to be providing any climate-controlled storage?
They said they were not. They said they weren't last session.
Okay, would not.
Yeah. What I took away from the last session is the only compressor and HVAC unit would be for the office space in the building only.
Okay.
Do we have any additional questions for the applicant at this time? I know you had a couple that were still a little pending. Any additional questions that they can answer? Okay. I'll again say, if there's anybody who's joining the meeting virtually, I ask you, please use the reactions function in the Zoom meeting to raise your virtual hand. Uh, and I'll turn around and see if anybody who's here in person would like to speak as well. Yes, Sir Walsh? Just come up to the podium.
This will be just to retouch on the question I asked.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Rob Walsh, three forty-one South Worcester Street. This will be just to re, redress, keep it on the table, the question I had last week, our last meeting, excuse me, about the floodplain and whether they're filling in any of that. And it's that Moe area that serves as kind of a catch base for the neighborhood. It's a valid question, it's not necessarily a showstopper. I don't know that they are, it, it's close. I've got over there not involved, and I just want to make sure they're not filling any of that, yeah.
They've got new air conditions for conservation.
Okay, but that's.
Goes through all the stormwater, goes through all that stuff.
Yeah. But I'm asking a specific question.
Understand.
Are they finally filling any of that in?
Last meeting, they said that they didn't believe they were, correct?
Uh, no, it wasn't, they were sure. They, we had talked about possibly giving out there, I'd show you exactly what I was going to say. And I'm not sure they are, that's why I'm posing as a question, not too much of a challenge, but I do want to get you with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I'll still form on, I'll just come back up. So I see somebody in the virtual meeting, Dom and Sue, I'm not sure who's looking to speak, but if you can just unmute and then state your name and address, please, for the record.
Yeah, hello. Yeah, we both want to speak. I'll go first, it's Dom, but, uh, three sixty-one South Worcester Street, look to be right, the director would be across. And I've said, you guys said the speed studies or something was done down by Whole Foods. Now, that's not capturing anything coming in from the other side. We've got Fox trucks already flying down inbound. I'm not sure if we're going to Frost King or Whole Foods or wherever, but.
They put down.
At this moment, we already have trucks flying from our end around a real tight bend. I have no idea if it's going to be down, done on that end of the street that's going to stop that.
They put two speed, speed sensor strips down, uh, basically at both ends of the Whole Market Foods site to get people going in each direction.
Right, but that's not by the other end of South Worcester Street, down near Park.
Not near Parker, no.
Yeah. Because that's where, there's a lot of trucks coming in from that direction. And I know, I don't know whose trucks they are, but I know when this guy comes, this building comes in, they're going to do the same thing, no matter what laws are put down, truckers are going to go where they want to go. They always do. So, um, I just want to make sure you're aware of that. And, uh, I haven't heard anything discussed about, you said something about the narrowing of the street, but there were a lot of the concerns about kids and people walking, the dogs up down the street. It seems like nothing's going to be done about that, we're just, I'm just going to deal with it.
I mean, we understand that it's a narrow road and people do walk on it. We had a similar project a couple of years ago on Hill Street, where it was a relatively narrow road, but it was an industrial use and an industrial zone. Yeah, we had similar discussions. Ultimately, if our board can't tell the town, make the road wider.
Right. Is there anything that could be done once the business goes in that maybe there could be a clock posted for a week or two weeks, so watch which way the trucks go?
Your, um, the, the question was if there would be the potential for, potential police monitoring of traffic patterns after the site went live, correct?
Right. Correct.
Just to provide some positive reinforcement?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's something that we could bring up to the police department. I'm not sure if they would be able to necessarily dedicate somebody to it, but we've talked about travel patterns entering and exiting the site, and that's something that we could condition with the building permit itself. So if they don't follow the conditions of the building permit, then their permit is invalid and they're in big trouble.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Sue. This is my wife, Sue.
Hi, I'm Sue DiGialamo, same address. I had, um, we had attended virtually the last meeting you had, um, May twenty-first, I believe. And during that time, someone got up and spoke about a memo dated May eighth that was from Mr. Paul DiGiuseppe to the planning board regarding, um, the special permit criteria that's to be met for this project. And I had emailed, um, on June eighth, I emailed Brian Carmichael and received a vacation response, um, and then emailed Mr. Paul DiGiuseppe that in my opinion, the criteria for this special permit have not been met. This, I don't see how this project is going to improve our neighborhood. I think it's going to cause more problems than we already have with the traffic, the noise, the, the truck leaving, the personal safety issues, et cetera. It's just, and especially because, yes, we are, we live across the street from this prospective site. So I guess, I, I'm just saying, I don't see how the, that the special permit criteria has been met. But is that being approved?
Though, we have not voted on anything yet. Those are the conditions that the board looks at with every special permit decision.
Okay. And I just, I've seen on the documents for this project online that are available to other residents and the butters. I would just request, has my email been added to this? Has other butters' emails have been added to the project?
I can confirm, I saw it.
Yes.
I've put every one, every.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Time round, is anybody? Okay. I don't see anybody else in person who's looking to come up and speak. So just, if I may, we did just got confirmation of the applicant, trucks will be. So just, if I may, we did just got confirmation of the outcome, trucks will be registered in town. Just maybe just confirm that.
Thank you.
In relation to the, the butters' question about the fill in that area that we discussed in the last session?
We're not filling anything at all or we're working essentially up on that hill that's existing up there.
Thank you. Okay.
Do we actually have five eligible members to vote?
Yeah, we got Steve's.
I forgot how many I have, just confirming.
You probably could be option one.
I do see, are you looking to speak now? Ms. Blanchett, are you looking to speak?
I am.
Thank you. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, please.
She muted herself.
Looks like you muted yourself again, so I'll give you a minute and ramble to myself here.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Blanchett. I live at 357 South Wester Street. I just had a couple of comments regarding the traffic study. It was noted that the speed monitor at the Gaffney Farm ends of Whole Foods, that is actually in the braking zone of people entering, so that would actually not monitor the speed very well. Just thought I'd draw that out there. It also is not capturing the people from Thermo King that do take a right out of the parking lot and come down the other end of South Wester Street. My second comment is, and this is just clarification for me, but I, I seem to notice that it doesn't appear that the actual applicant for this permit is the owner of the land. Could that be confirmed?
I can ask the applicant? That's generally not something that I would... We generally represent, we can often represent, see applicants who are representing properties that they are in an agreement to lease or purchase, but that transaction's not been completed yet, or et cetera, et cetera. So...
Okay. I just noticed that the land card said that it was owned by a Rhino Capital, which actually also owns the Thermo King and Datico building at 378 South Wester Street.
Yeah. Understood, thank you.
And just one more quick note on that. According to their website, they actually have two lots in the Taunton Industrial Park that are already permitted for warehousing. So it seems to me that there would actually be a reasonable alternative to accomplish their process, especially if they don't actually own the land yet.
This is where the applicant has chosen to submit an application. Obviously, I would, my view on that, which is my own opinion, is that they would generally, if they wanted to go in the industrial park on Miles Standish and they felt that that was their best option, they would have done that. Obviously, they feel that going through this process with the town of Norton is what they feel is their best, best choice.
Thank you for your time.
Based on every other factor that they've looked at, so...
All right, thank you for your time.
Anybody else would like to, additional questions for the applicant at this time?
Yeah. Just to reiterate, and I don't know, you know, it's kind of up in the air, random question you're not prepared for yet. The easement, it's 30 acres of land, and one of our major goals in town is to have access to our waterways. It's a big project that's going on right now, and that would be something that might push the project to be more beneficial than not.
That's something I don't have the answer to, but I'd have to speak with the applicant.
Yes, okay, thank you. Do we have initial questions for the applicant at this time? I do see, they end up there in one second. So if we don't have any questions, we have a couple of questions that they've stated that they would need to check with the applicant on. Are you, let's see. Speaking for Steve, is this something where you would like an answer prior to us closing the public hearing?
I'm okay with closing the public hearing.
If we close the public hearing, we can't get an answer from him prior to this.
Okay, well then, well then, no.
Okay. So, so with that in mind, to get that answer in terms of how we proceed in terms of either public access or conservation or whatever would happen with the rest of the wetland property that you're not using, we would potentially be looking to continue in a future meeting.
The applicant?
Could I maybe provide some context for that?
Sure.
Sure. Members of the board, Carlos Sculty with Civil and Foreman, and consultants work with Mike. I would offer that I think we would be open to a condition that allows the applicant to explore the opportunity for easement or access. I think an informal access, you know, we can't do anything in the rear portion of the property, it's all conservation linked anyway. So I think the functional use of that space, I think they would certainly be open with, but restricting and adding encumbrances onto the property with formal easements and conservation restrictions, I think would be a hard thing to agree to just because of the nature of the property. We can't do anything out there anyway. So to the extent that people might walk their dogs or do whatever they could do out there informally, I think that would be certainly something that the applicant would be okay with. And if there were a condition that offered the exploration of that, whether it's working with the town in some sort of way, I think we could do that, but to condition the project to require a formal easement, I don't know that the applicant would be willing to undertake that.
Thank you. Does that provide the clarity that you were looking for?
I suppose so.
So the open question, I think, Laura, was, what was the other open question that you had that we weren't sure that they had? I know we had the registration was confirmed.
Moving versus storage, but varied. Just the why Norton in general, why, why leaving Foxborough, just, that's more of a...
Rhetorical?
Yeah, it, you know, given the prime location to highway access, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, but maybe there's some compelling reason that, would it sway me? Probably not.
Okay.
More of a, more of a curiosity.
So it seems like we have satisfied all of our questions to this point to the degree that we can. I did see one additional question for a member of the public, so I'll ask. And if you can state your name and address again.
Rob Walsh, 341 South Wester Street, Norton, Massachusetts. And this might be, Steve, if we're talking about an easement, you know, this would be allowing some additional parking for people to cut, drive in there, put their cars, and then go walk in the area. Is that kind of what you were thinking of?
At the very least, open to pedestrian activity within that space. As far as putting an access road or something like that, that's not a requirement I'm asking.
Okay, because, and I'm sorry to say this, I'm going to comment as a, from a resident's point of view, the people living there, I'm not sure we would like that too much. And then also, light people walk down those woods, I don't think it's a great idea at all. It is wetlands, where it's supposed to be, and I hike there a lot, it's not...
Well, Tim, could I make a comment?
I think that what the applicant has represented is informal...
Yeah.
Pedestrian, light recreation use isn't something they're going to care about. That's basically the limit of, and if they want to explore some kind of...
Okay.
Agreement with the town on that, since it borders a town's site, that's pretty much the limit of what we're...
So let me shorten this, you don't have to answer my questions, that from a resident's point of view, I don't think we'd be crazy about inviting, you know, that is such a place for that.
If I may, also, you did just say that you personally hike in there, and at a previous meeting, you said when it was flooded, you brought your kayak out there.
Yes, I did.
So as a resident, you want to use it, but not provide access to the other residents?
Oh, no, they could, there are ways to get in there, certainly. That's how I do.
But it's illegal if they don't have permission, if you haven't gotten permission to trespass.
That's, that's...
But that's why I would like...
Yeah. You know, we're...
Okay, but yes, I have done those things. No, we can put those points on the thing, I have done those things.
No, okay. So do we have additional questions for the applicant at this time? Otherwise, I'd ask the applicant if there's anything else that they would like to present, ask questions, ask clarifications prior to entertaining any motions to close the public hearing.
I think everything's been addressed.
Any else from members of the board?
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Again, this is just a motion to close the hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay. All voting members, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. The public hearing is closed. We'll not hear any further evidence or testimony related to the application. Is there anything else that, are we proceed to, prepared to proceed with a vote on the application itself at this time? Or prefer to table that to a future discussion?
I'm ready to move forward.
I'm okay moving forward.
Thank you.
Anybody like to make a motion?
It's moved.
And we're looking to move with conditions, under the conditions...
Standard conditions.
Other conditions that we discussed included no refrigerated storage, hours of operation, which we discussed in detail at the last session. Requesting the trucks turn left exiting the site to go towards 140.
Further that, would it be worth a condition of signage to do that?
I believe they had that with site planned, but yes. Any other conditions that we wanted to include?
Trimming of within the site triangles.
Thank you. And the condition related to...
We also wanted to do idling. That came up last week, no idling?
Yes, no idling. And the conservation, potential informal recreation discussions with the town to be explored.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Is there, are there any other conditions? Because obviously that was a mouthful. Okay. Jim, is your motion still?
Still, yes.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve with all of the stated conditions? Okay. Given that we have two members refusing, I'm just going to go and do a roll call here just to make it clear. Eric, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So approved with multiple conditions. And again, per procedure, we'll go through that and all we can, that's definitely what we want to look at at a future. Okay.
Thank you all for your time, everybody. Still have to vote on the site plan and the waiver.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. So we have additional motions required for the waiver for the driveway, correct?
Yes.
And the site plan.
So moved.
On which one?
The site plan and the waiver for the driveway.
We should do those separately.
Should be.
Yeah, which is probably set with the site plan.
Okay. Someone will mention to approve site plan, and I've lost them when I was ahead.
Okay. So motion to approve the site plan?
Yes, motion.
Okay.
Second motion.
Yeah, motion and a second. Okay.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Eric again.
Eric, okay.
They're both right next to each other, so it's a little...
They're munching at this.
Okay. With this one, I'll just do everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that's five zero. And the waiver on the driveway?
Motion to approve the associated waiver. Seconded.
Put a clap on that one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Five zero, okay. So next item on our agenda is Waiting River Estates. This is 0108 South Wester Street. This is a modified special permit and site plan. So this is, I'll give a little bit of background, and then I'll give Paul the opportunity to weigh in here. So this is a subdivision, we're going to call it a subdivision, which is off of the other end of South Wester Street, across from CPS, basically, or CPS, is that the right acronym? Yeah. Back in the, in the woods there. It's a site that's gone through a number of different rounds of permits over its history. Some of them have been approved, some of them died on the vine. This is one that was initially approved right before COVID, and then we extended it after COVID because, shockingly, COVID made everything stop for a while. So the amount of time on their permit ran out, so they presented, they are now presenting a modified special permit to us.
Tim, can you remind me, or actually Paul won't be able to because you weren't here, we had a discussion with them back in July of last year?
We did.
This is the culmination of that discussion?
I think the discussion that we had a previous session, I want to say last year, was they presented a draft version of the new plan, and we gave them the directional feedback that this would be a, not a minor modification to their approved permit.
Okay.
And it would be a major modification, which is why it's here.
Got it.
Another quick question, Davis.
It does appear to be close to the same plan that we looked at last July. Is that accurate?
I will let the applicant speak to that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we can do our presentation, and it would probably answer a lot of the questions that the members are having.
Please, please go ahead, Mr. Dunn.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Dunn with MBLA in Development and Permitting with offices at 5 Bristol Drive in Southeastern Mass. I am the principal of the firm. I'm here on behalf of Scott and John Stormo, who are the owners of the property. As you, as you may remember, we are, back in 2020, we permitted a special permit site plan under, I think it's called chapter or section 19 of your bylaw, which has a special permit site plan approval process with an affordable component attached to it. So we originally got an approval from this honorable board. We also got a conservation commission order of conditions, which was also extended at the same time that we were back in front of you about a year ago discussing this plan amendment. So what we've come up with is a revised plan, same amount of units. It's a reduction in the limit of work, it's a reduction in the clearing, it still complies with all of the stormwater rules and regulations. It also still has the four affordable units associated with the project as part of that special permit, original approval. And, and I'd like to be able to shade a screen to go over some of these details if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You should have the ability. If you don't, let me know, and I'll try and figure out what button I need to press here. There you go.
Okay, so can we see all of this stuff?
Yes, we do, thank you.
Okay, very good. So here is the, the site on Waiting River, which is called Waiting River. And you were correct, there was a bunch of different proposals originally, was originally a subdivision, was called Strawberry Fields, it was a 40B subdivision, which I can't remember all the details off of my head of why it was, I think it was appealed, it was approved, and it was appealed, and so on and so forth. So that was, I think it was 130 homes that were going originally, with, you know, alteration of even down in this area... with alteration of even down in this area along the river to put those homes. And what we did was we came up with a different plan. And this was the plan that was originally approved of one of them, as you can see. And that was 37 units. And you can see the area of the units and the parking in the back and a lot of pavement around here and a lot of visitor parking. And this was a community septic system and a lot of pavement coming around here and so on and so forth and the limit of work. And then this is really the revised plan. As you can see, we're not bringing pavement all the way around this way anymore. The drainage basin stays the same. And these are really the details of these differences. So on the original plans and the 2022 plans that were originally approved were five, six family condos and two triplexes, 37 units, including the existing home out front. You may remember or are still utilizing that existing home as part of this project. It was roughly about 182,948 square feet of impervious area and a clearing of 433,156 square feet of alteration. Riverfront area was around 6,700 square feet. And then we had a turtle nesting area that was being preserved as part of the project, that was part of the recommendations with the conservation commission and agent at the time. And the length of the roadway for this site plan approval was at 1,900 feet. And the proposed conditions were at 12 triplexes, still staying at 37 units and including the existing house, a reduction of over 100,000 square feet of impervious area. The limit of work is reduced to 389,000 square feet of clearing. The riverfront area of alteration almost cut in half. We have expanded the turtle nesting area almost two times, a little more than two times. And the length of roadway has been reduced from the 1,900 linear feet of roadway to 971 linear feet of roadway. We have a 47% increase in open space and landscaping area and less impervious area proposed with this new plan within the 100-foot buffer zone. This plan here shows you in purple the limit of work in this area here. Oops, sorry, clicked the run button. You can see the limit of work around our basin. There's a big mound here on the site. You can see the contours. And there's a path that's through the site here. We walked this with the conservation commission last Friday. This is the red line is the 25-foot no-touch zone, which we originally proposed. No alteration. And in the blue site plan, you'll see the same. And this is the 100-foot buffer zone. The yellow and the brown is the riverfront. So you can see the vast area of clearing for this project. On the new plan, we gave you a legend here where the bondies or the wetlands are in green. And maroon color is the 25-foot no-touch. The red line is the originally approved limit of work. And then the green line is the new one. So you can see that the limit of work is coming in a lot, especially in this area here on the site and over here and various little areas over here. The turtle nesting area that's in this purple area is the expanded area that I just talked about. And this plan here gives you an idea of where the basin is to the site and the buffer zones. You can see the limited clearing in the free line here and where the triplexes are. And you can see how much of this has been reduced from the other plan that was approved by this honorable board. And then this is more of a detailed plan of our grading and our drainage redesign. And then the turtle nesting area is here. And I can actually say that I did witness shells, turtle shells, and found a painted turtle walking around this area when we did the site walk. It's not an endangered species, but we're still, you know, holding a nice area for the animals to come and be able to nest and have a habitat. The earthworks that we proposed is over a 20% reduction in earthwork material. As you can see, the differences in the site, where the cuts and fills are. So we're at, I think I said 20%, it's 25% of a fill meter, so it's a reduction. And then these are a scenario of what the triplexes are going to look like on this site. Originally, we had, you know, some duplexes, quads and six units with, you know, garages in the back and garages under. This allows for one garage and, you know, additional parking in front of the garages as well for these units. So that kind of is the revisions to the plans and the request for the plan amendment. We were in front of the conservation commission last evening. And that honorable board continued us to July 8th so that we can address the peer review comments, which total 10 comments, which were very, very minor in nature and very, very de minimis to the impact of the site plan and the drainage. Now, they really relate to some TSS removal calculations and providing them, as well as some, you know, changes in some of the elevations within a hundredths of a foot that was requested of us during that meeting. However, the conservation commission would like us to address those 10 comments, see the revised plans, have their peer review consultant verify that we have done what we've been asked to do, which I'm sure that we will be able to prevail and show that information on our revised plans and ultimately get an amendment to the order of conditions that was already issued. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I know we spend a lot of time looking at stormwater in the initial application, specifically as it relates to drainage. I am terrible with... Specifically to the west of the site or the southwest of the site. Because the site is a high water... No worries. The site's kind of a high point in the area. And I know the site to the left, to the southwest, already has a decent amount of flooding on a regular basis. So even with the stormwater regulations, kind of, you retain the amount that you're retaining already. Want to make sure that the amount that you... That where you're retaining it on the site isn't lopsided. Does that make sense?
If I can answer that, Mr. Chairman. So if you may remember, we had an extensive drainage review by the town's consultant at the time, Mr. John Cheshire. And as you can see, the northwest of the site is going to be untouched. This, that's the area that you were concerned about over here. This is our limit of work. We're not proposing anything over here. All of our drainage has been designed to flow to this basin over here and also to an underground system at the front of the house, on the... At the front area of the house, the existing house, to control the stormwater runoff of the access road to the property. That has been extensively peer reviewed. And John Cheshire is a very, very detailed engineer.
Yes, he is.
And we were able to address his comments and prove to him that this drainage design works and is in compliance with the stormwater rules and regulations of the state, DEP, as well as the towns. With the peer review consultant for the conservation commission is now Mr. Brennan. And he also reviewed our new stuff as well and came back with 10 comments. So, and he actually said in his letter that we... This is a reduction in the impervious area and that the stormwater complies with the rules and regulations. So we wouldn't have gotten better like that with only 10 comments if we were not controlling the runoff adequately to the standards of the engineering standards, as well as the DEP's standards and the towns.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So I think, Mr. Dunn, I think I'm the only member of the board who was here for the initial application. So I will turn to the other members here if they have additional questions about the project itself and everything else associated to dive into this here. Is the catch basin right by the river?
I'm sorry, I didn't make that out. It was broken up.
The question is, is the catch basin up? The catch basin is up in the north of the site by the river, is that correct?
To the north of the site? So if you go back to this plan here. So this is north. So our drainage basin is over here in the site, which you can see in my mouse.
Okay, that is just a question. Thanks.
You're very welcome.
And Paul, is there anything that you wanted to state just from your perspective in terms of looking at the original application and everything else in the process associated?
No, it's... Brian has already gone through, but one thing I do need to point out, and this was a... I have to apologize to the applicant and apologize to the board. We had a glitch with OpenGov. We didn't realize that it didn't release or allow our department reviewers until late last week to actually review it. That's on me. Again, I'm sorry. I should have... I should have seen it. Anyway, but there was a comment by the conserva... I mean, by the health agent that was posted last week about... That there was... When the original plan came in there, they had had a peer review done on the septic system. He's asking for another here.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's not a problem. We understood that. And actually, we actually took some of the recommendations of the peer review and the Board of Health agent in this new design, where originally the septic system design and the unit design was under a pressure system. And now we're able to design in a way, since we don't have these big walkouts in the back and the grading changes, we're able to design it so it's a gravity system to the field and then dosing. So we understand that we will be going back to the Board of Health for another permit and a review of our septic system design. And like the first time, I'm sure that we will prevail.
Thank you. And are there other town departments that haven't checked, haven't reviewed yet, given the timing?
No, we had asked for it to be done by today, but something happened, so...
By and by, it still says in progress.
Yeah.
Open Gov.
Okay.
So I mean, I would like to know that they've at least definitely looked at it before.
I think the issue would be there... Again, I think this is a good improvement for a number of the reasons that Brian's mentioned. But one of the things we need to get from the fire department is the original design had a loop road.
We still have that, Paul.
You do.
So we don't have a looped road, but we have a one roadway access with a cul-de-sac at the end. And if I can stop sharing and switch screens, hold on for a second. So that's the original septic system that was approved, as you can see right there. And then... Okay. So you can see the roadway coming in with the cul-de-sac here. There's plenty of room for the Norton Fire Truck to access the site and turn around. And then we did a fire truck. So you can still see that the fire truck has still access to come in, turn around at the cul-de-sac, and then come back out. We are still looping the water line, like we said in the original design as well. So those... And then, and then if I can, this gives you an idea of where the affordable units are going to be. They're not going to be in one unit. They're going to be all over the place. So we still did that as well.
Okay.
And then I just want to get back to... So you can see the water line looping.
And that was their request from the water department.
Down here, so that water line still loops. And then you see it right here. So it's coming in, going through the site, and then coming back down here, like we said, like we said in the original design. There it is again. And you see the water line looping again.
And I believe one of the original conditions with that finger of land was that once the water line was put in, that there was interest from the abutters to purchase the parcel with the easement on it, correct?
That's still on the table. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Question real quick. When you say little finger lane, you're talking about this, it looks like a second driveway coming out over here?
Yeah, it's just grass right now. If you go up there, it's just a pathway back to the back.
Well, you can actually stand here where the path is and see this all the way down to South Worcester Street.
Yeah.
And I just understand you said that they're talking about letting the abutters...
That was one of the original requests from the abutters was, well, we need to put the water line in, but once the water line's in, we don't need it anymore. So they were hoping to sell it to somebody if that was something that was in interest to the abutters and something that took action.
If it was sold, it would probably be an easement afterwards.
Yeah. For the pipe and then yeah.
Yeah.
So we still need the water department, right? Even, it's changed, right?
Then water line hasn't changed.
Well, location's changed. Now, well?
Not... It's only changed where the roadway is missing. This loop was still on the other plan. I can show you on the other plan where it is.
It's not me. I mean, it's... I just think any new plan, the water department needs to see it.
If they were on the Open Gov checklist...
And this is more administrative too, even though we're supposed to... They're supposed to check this. It's on the applicant also to see. If the fire department didn't see it, they know they're coming for a meeting. They also need to each other and say, you know... It's... A lot of this is on the applicant too, not just on the town side. To defend Paul a little bit. It is on the applicant to get everything, boxes checked, that they need to do in front of a meeting.
It's a team act.
It is a team, exactly. They both have to do it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this is a new system for the town and for us.
That's what I just said, but it applies to any meeting anywhere.
You know, it was our understanding that this was a plan amendment and we were still complying with the fire department's request like we did before and also the water department.
It's a new plan. They still need to look at it.
Yes, the plan has changed, but the intent is we still have public safety access being provided. And we're also providing the water that they asked.
Yeah, we understand. But it's good, I think, to Alan's point, it's good practice for us to make sure that town boards are wa... Town departments are weighing in on whether it's a re-application or whether it's a new application, so...
I got a question.
Yes.
Is there guest parking in the neighborhood? It looks like two parking spots at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Sure. Mr. Dunn, could you just pull up the site plan again if there are any asked areas that are set aside for guest parking? My memory from four years ago is not... Is not a...
It looks like there's thirty-six more than the 2020 plan, but I don't know where they are.
There was a lot of parking on the other plan, but this one, hopefully it's just...
Okay, let me try to answer the question, hold on a second, so there's no confusion, hold on please. Wrong one, sorry.
So, that's the old site.
Yeah, two things open up.
Story of my life.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, here we go, so, we go to the, to the parking plan.
So, the, the question is, we understand that there's a garage for each unit and potential parking in front, but outside of that, obviously, people have people visit them, so the guest parking spots are where?
Right, so we said, here's, here's a garage spot, one, two, and another three here. So, there's actually three spaces that are allowed for each unit. So, so we're allowing, we're allowing two spaces per unit plus one visitor space, uh, which is a hundred and eleven spaces. And originally, we were at a hundred and eighty spaces because we didn't have the, the spaces for visitors near or next to the units. And we had them around that central area going around the septic system and there was guest parking, you know, further away from the units. So, this allows, you know, one guest or two guests with this one car per family. And so, that regulation of two, what is it, two point five cars or two point seven cars per unit is being addressed.
So, the, so the guest parking is within the driveways of each individual unit, there is not, there are no guest parking spots marked on the plan outside of that?
No, because originally, they were up in this area here where the, where the roadway looped around. So, we removed that, with that extra pavement that we were getting rid of.
Okay.
And then put the, put the other cars up, up against, you know, the garage and right behind it. So, there's plenty of room for the three vehicles.
Tim, if I may, with that follow-up on that, am I to expect that in this community during the holiday seasons, that neighborhood is not going to get clustered with cars parked up and down the road?
Everybody's just told to pick one.
That's, that, that would potentially be the challenge, yes. Yes.
And what are the two spaces on the cul-de-sac?
You know, I'd like to hear from Paul because I think that, you know, a reduction in parking is, is probably an okay thing.
Is there a reduction in units, though?
No, it's the same number of units.
No, it's not a reduction in parking, it's not a reduction in units.
And the same number of bedrooms to which would affect...
The same amount of units that was originally approved by this board.
So, the, so they meet the zoning requirements for parking based on the number of bedrooms?
That's correct.
But, but just?
Nobody could have a trailer or anything in their driveway or, like, as soon as anything's in the driveway, there's no parking for even one guest or delivery?
Yeah, there is, there is not extra guest parking associated with any of the site, any of the site.
The amount of deliveries that go through any neighborhood?
They don't park in driveways anyway.
They don't take truck on the side of the road.
Yeah, I just noticed a big drop in the available parking without a big drop in the people expected to be there.
They just accounted for it with three in the driveway.
Yeah, I know.
I'm having a hard time hearing everybody.
No, I understand, it's, it's just discussion that understanding where you have put the parking for each site and planning for, understanding what will, what we think would happen the first time somebody wants to have three friends over. Are, are they going to park in the street and park in the driveway and then understanding what width of driveway is left for anybody else to go buy it? And thinking through that scenario, I think is what we're trying to do.
I, I think, you know, I think people are, people are, they're going to park where they want to park. Uh, you know, unfortunately, that's, that's the human nature. We, we do comply with the zoning, with the amount of parking. It was my understanding that a, a reduction in parking would be well received, it sounds like it's not.
Let's interrupt the discussion.
Don't take my question as being against it, I just was noticing the disparity, you know, I I'm learning, observing this for the first time and I noticed a drop in one thing without a corresponding drop in the other.
Yeah, because we've got a huge reduction in the impervious area, we've got a big reduction in the limit of work. It's the same amount of units in a small, in a smaller area. Uh, we comply with the zoning, we comply with the special permit uh, regulation on, on the affordable section. Uh, it's the same width of the roadway that we had originally approved. Uh, this is not a subdivision, it's a site plan. This, there will be a homeowners association associated with this, just like it's before, we, we did before. This is, um, you know, a, a better plan because we've got different style houses or different style units with the triplexes. We don't have garages in the back underneath, we have garages up front. So, it, it's all, overall, a much, much better plan.
Paul, did you want to speak to the discussion of parking?
Just, yeah, one bit of a question about parking, say at the peak, like during holidays, and this is a question that comes up a lot in retail. How do you handle parking for the, what used to be the big day, the day after Thanksgiving? And you, you don't want to build parking to accommodate your, that one worst-case day because then the rest of the time, you're
Left with a ton.
A ton of empty spaces, so. I, I, you know, they're, they are meeting and actually exceeding what our parking regs are. Um, and I think that's, you know, if it's, if it's taking away permeable surface, that's less drainage problems.
I like the smaller blueprint.
Oh, I think that's good and I understand about rules and all that, I'm just looking at real life and trying to picture how that's going to work in real life.
I, I appreciate the, the new blueprint, it looks great, I like the smaller houses, I like the, the alignment and everything. The only thing that I'm noticing is that there is a lack of a little bit of parking overflow. I cannot imagine this many units are not going to have extra guests, not during holidays, but just regularly. At least once a week, somebody's going to have two guests. And where are they going to park? And I'll take, I want to know what that, on the end of the cul-de-sac is, is that parking, is that a snow thing?
It's two spaces, you say.
At the end of the cul-de-sac, we have, Mr. Chairman.
Right, yes, there, yeah.
That's dumpster.
Dumpster, okay. I thought it was the fire department turnaround area also.
Well, the fire department turnaround is within the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Didn't you see there were two parking spaces up there too?
No, no. So. Okay. Maybe additional questions for the applicant or maybe members of the pub, or anybody would like to go to members of the public and they want to speak?
I got two small things, I think the applicant just said this wasn't a special permit, but it is. We have a special permit and a site plan.
He said it wasn't a subdivision plan.
Okay, I heard a special permit.
I heard it.
Yeah, he said special.
I'm, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm having a hard time hearing everybody's breaking up.
Sorry, yes, no, we're, it's, uh, it may be the internet here at the library, but I think it was just a discussion about the specific relief that you're asking for, it's a, a special permit site plan, not a subdivision.
That is correct, and it's technically, we're asking for an amendment to the already approved decision.
Yes.
Seems like, like we talked about before, it's not an amendment, it's a major modification.
This is a new plan.
Yeah, it's a mod, it's a major modification, yes.
Okay, I, I call it an amendment, you guys call it a major modification. So, we're asking for a major modification, the already approved decision by this board.
What does that do to the timeframe of being able to start in construction? Was it two years special permits are good for, is that what it is?
Correct, which is why they had an extension in 2022.
Correct, but now it's 2024.
Right, and...
And this is going to extend it another two years?
No, I think it's a new one.
Correct, yes.
Yes, this is, that's my question, this will extend it another two years because this is a new special permit type.
Right.
Did you have anything?
And if I may, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, and Paul, can we specifically, if, if you guys vote for this, can that updated decision specifically say the date of, of the, uh, of permit will expire on the decision?
I think that would be from the date it's filed, so we may not know that until...
We have a standard condition that talks about, about that.
Okay.
And it's typically two years.
Because on the original decision, there is no timeframe associated with it. But we understood it was two, two years.
Understood, thank you.
So, going back to your question, Mr. Chairman, um, as far as questions, I still need fire department, they have minimum sign-on, in my view.
Okay.
I, I would appreciate seeing at, at least minimum, like a gravel area that people could drive into if they're not going to provide parking, because on a private property, most people, if they have too many cars, they park on the grass. And this doesn't look like it has even an area people can go off of a curb into the grass or something like that. I don't mind them parking on the grass, but they need to get there.
I am wondering if there's a middle ground situation on this parking, because they've brought it down a ton. Seems like they took it from something absorbent, way too much surface.
It's only the design of the houses, because they couldn't put the number of spots at the duplexes.
Right, but they did bring it down a large number, is my point. So, I'm staying focused on that point.
Yeah.
And it is a big change, I'm just wondering, you know, it came down to something where we're kind of going, eh, it's kind of tight from something that was absorbent, so is there middle ground there?
Okay. Anything further before I ask if there's anybody in the, from the public that'd like to speak? Okay. Uh, if you've joined the Zoom meeting, please try to raise your virtual hand if you'd like to speak, otherwise I'll turn around and see if there's anybody here with us at the library you'd like to come up and speak. Frank, you want to try walking back into Zoom, my battery's probably good about half a minute.
Hi, Ed Burgess, 102 South West Street, on the direct border on the west side. Um, was there any consideration given to any buffer for fence or trees or anything, so it's just not right in that face going in? Because that whole thing is on the side of our property and right behind it, the whole thing is pretty much right on us.
I believe there's a stretch in my memory, Mr. Dunn, but I believe there's a retaining wall on that side.
Mr. Chairman, who is that abutter and what's their name and where do they live?
Uh, Ed Burgess, 102 South West.
And you live where, Pat?
His, his, it's Ed, and he's right, uh, to the west of the site. The big, the big lot to the west and...
And he lives right here?
Yep.
You live right here?
Yes.
Where my mouse is?
Yep.
Okay. So, there is, uh, we do have clearing up to, you know, a few feet off the property line. There was, there is trees over there in the back here.
Yep.
Uh, with, some of them are yours, some of them are, uh, one awake. Um, and I think we do have a landscaping plan, and I've...
Retaining wall, probably makes me think they're going, so they're going to...
I think that's more in the back, I was thinking more in the back, so it's my bad.
So, we are planting, um, uh, trees and bushes on this side and this, this area here, there's no retaining wall.
Yeah, that's, that's on, that's on me, that was more in the back, I believe.
Is there anything along the road going up to it?
That, along, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm...
Yeah, so it's...
What, what's the question?
And there are additional plantings that you have right up against the road in front of the existing house, correct?
Yes, we're proposing plants in front of the house, you can see them in gray, gray, black and red. And then the other, the other trees that we're adding and bushes are in green along that westerly, uh, property line.
Yeah, and the existing house, again, is, you're looking that, for that to remain, so.
Yes, so the house remains, this is the underground infiltration system for the drainage for the front area of the lot, of the site. And then there'll be grading over here and these plants, uh, planted along the, the west, westly side of the road. And those are, um, they're a, they're really a juniper type of a, a tree and will be green all year long.
Is there a fence with those junipers too, is that what that other line is?
And the, the question, Mr. Dunn, is, is there an additional fence? Is there additional fencing near those plantings or no?
No, there's just the fence, there's, I'm sorry, there's just the, the plants, there's the property line, the plants, and then a godreel to protect the vehicles from going over the curbing. There is no fence.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah.
You can just address questions to me.
The other, the other thing that concerns me, I'm not an engineer, but I know how wet that, that, you were looking to it earlier, it is wet. It's wet out back, I played out there all my life as a kid out there. And I'm, I'm sure they're going to have to bring a lot of grade up for those houses and I, I still fear for more flooding, but I'm glad you guys talked about the parking because I deal with that all the time. You know, one of the biggest nightmares in town is 274 East Main, the parking. And you know, you know where all the parking's going to go down, it's going to go down that cul-de-sac that the fire department supposedly can turn around on. And you know, it doesn't matter if it's a holiday or not, there's going to be cars here, I'm glad you guys are addressing that. But where it's an HOA, does the town have the authority to enforce parking? If they do find out that all this passes and then do find out they're parking all over the cul-de-sac, there's people all the time there, it's a nightmare. Are we able, able to do anything because it's an HOA, not a town road? Or can they create order conditions that the people that buy it know you will not park cars? You have your two point seven or whatever that means, uh, in the driveway, because that means nothing. If the guy doesn't park, if the guy uses his garage for a, for storage, he's not even going to park in the garage, but uh, I mean, I don't know why you take one of the whole buildings out and put a parking area there, but I know that's not, not going to happen, but I just, that parking's going to be a nightmare.
I think that you've, there have been more than one member of the board has identified that and I think it's something that we'll follow up with.
Tim, Tim, could I ask a question before Ed? During an emergency response, how many vehicles will typically show up?
Um, you can have, it can be a ladder, two engines, an engine and handles, so average, average three, three to four.
So, at least three vehicles are going to have to fit through there in an emergency, there's anybody blocking this.
That's, usually the auto turn will go on the ladder and then, but the, yeah, if I think the fire department sign-off that Alan's mentioned and the idea about guest parking, because I do think the path of least resistance for at least anybody who's visiting somebody in the back is going to be to park by that cul-de-sac. At least if they don't mind walking. If they don't mind, if they don't feel like walking, then they're just going to go sideways behind their friend's car. Whether or not they're close enough to get out of the road is an unquestioned...
Parallel park to the road, right?
Basically, yeah. So, I think those are the, the multiple, if they, they park in the driveway well, they park in the driveway poorly and they're sticking into the road, or they parallel park on the side of the road and cut away the road.
And I have a more question than you, the HOA thing was coming up there, does that make anything unenforceable? So, even if we came to some agreement here about what they were, you know, no parking in certain things or, you know, any of those conditions?
We can include conditions to be included in the HOA by laws.
They blow it off.
Then the HOA conditions are part of the permitted theory. It's a, it's a bit of a daisy chain there, but...
It's better to prepare ahead of time.
Yes, we've had a number of things where we have requested that the HOA documents require maintenance of a certain feature, especially if it's drainage related, um, that needs to be maintained. So, um, that would be something we could consider, yes. So that would be something we could consider, yes.
I have another comment. If, you know, just a more of a notice, something I noticed, the, the former design had a bit of a community vibe to it with a large park, I guess in the center of that, of that road ring. This seems much more secluded, I don't know if there's, like, supposed to be any community as a parcel.
Above the house, pre-existing house, there's a community playground and stuff.
Yeah, it's just the, the small area there, there's not that big open field in the middle. But the rest of the site is also as it is now, so it's wooded.
Yeah.
Which is a different kind of recreation, definitely, but there is no big ball field there, no.
So is, is there a dedicated open space portion of this lot?
Not in the way that it's set aside as a cluster or anything like that. It's just the limit of work, and then they're getting right up to the wet ones, so it's kind of open space by.
Mr. Chairman, this whole, this, this whole area here where the septic system is going to go is going to be wide open. This is all, this is all loam and seed and grass.
Okay, so there will be a big open area, I was mistaken, thank you. Okay.
And then this is the turtle nesting area that remains, remains untouched.
Thank you. Apologies.
Not a problem. So on this, this parking thing, is this also the recommendation of Paul to add more parking?
I'd say.
Do we comply with the zoning?
Well, if, if it satisfies the, the, the needs of the board, let's, let's do it.
Okay, so that, doing that adds to my drainage, so I need to know a number of parking from this board tonight.
Okay, so the number of units is what?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven units.
Three bedrooms each, right?
And they are, and how many bedrooms per unit? Or how many bedrooms in total?
There are, let me hold, let me tell you exactly.
On Paul's memo.
In the first phase, we have, we have forty-eight beds with nineteen units. And then, and then the rest of them, so that's, so that's three two-bedrooms, sixteen three-bedrooms, which is forty-eight beds and another six beds, fifty-four beds. And then we have the other eighteen units of just two bedrooms, that's thirty-six. So we have nineteen units in the first phase and eighteen units in the second phase, total of thirty-seven units. Which is six, forty-eight and thirty-six.
If I could, I'm just kind of shooting up my head.
Let's, let's, let the.
You're looking for forty-eight plus thirty-six?
So it's, so it's, so it's ninety bedrooms total.
Ninety bedrooms, okay. So. The number that comes into my head is eight.
Eight parking spots?
Does anybody want to react negatively, positively to that number?
I feel comfortable with that. I was thinking just a tiny park mirror where that dumpster area is at the end.
Are you saying we're thinking more four?
That's pushing, I, I was thinking honestly, a dozen? Because like, a dozen's our thing where if it goes over twelve, you have to mark the parking spots. If it's less than that, if it's twelve or under, you don't even have to mark them. I don't know if that can like qualify as like a part of the open space little parking field thing.
Okay.
Is there a little bit of an area too, like, somewhere where the road kind of bends? Looks like it's right on the inside of that lane? Yeah, right there.
I'm not sure what.
What is right there?
Right, so right there is loam and seed and grass area right now.
I think that.
Just want to go to the landscaping plan just to double check.
I, I think our job is to give Mr. Dunn guidance about how we're feeling and.
I just need to know the number and I can, yeah, so we have plantings here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
To, to beautify this area.
So.
Can you scan down too, please? Because I think there was some confusion about an actual designated community area.
Yeah, it says loam and seed.
Right, but go down to the pre-existing house, then I thought you also had something.
It's a dog park, yeah.
Yeah, community recreation, that's what I was.
It's a little area, yeah.
That's what I was referring to.
Oh, look, there's three on street.
Are those, and then are those spots associated with a particular unit there, or are those?
No, the, this is for the mailbox. So it allows for three cars to park for the communal mailbox.
Okay.
That's stopping only.
Thank you.
So.
Also, a dog park is usually, did a lot of poop in it, it's not really a ball playing area.
No, that's, well.
But I can see this area here, even the septic system area, being plenty of room for.
Perfect.
Football playing, soccer playing and baseball.
No, I think that's good, other parking, what I was looking for was down through, rather than sticking a little cluster way up at the far end of the street is little bunches of them. That's why I was kind of eyeing that area on the bend, whether you could add, you know, a little row of spaces along the road there.
Yeah, so.
Some things like that.
So.
Just a few extra spots for overage. I don't, I, I agree we don't want to build for the holiday season, you know, year round or anything, but.
So I had thrown out eight. Does anybody feel that's the wrong number to give Mr. Dunn?
I'm very comfortable with eight through twelve, I think that's perfect.
I was going to say ten, so I'm not going to wait over ten.
Okay, and so you're hearing.
Another eight here.
So the, the notes that I'm getting from the board are somewhere in the eight, ten, twelve range for parking. And it's hearing, so if we can look at putting in some level of guest parking, I think that would be beneficial.
Okay.
And ease some of our concerns about traffic and potential parking issues blocking emergency access.
So we've got three things to do, fire department, water department, add some parking.
Is there any additional questions or comments we have for Mr. Dunn at this time?
Yes.
We have additional public comment, so I was asking you to state your name and address to the record, please, and you can address questions to me.
Susan Howahan, 118 South Worcester Street.
Thank you.
I am the L-shaped area on the bottom right-hand side.
Thank you.
Where the turtle nesting area has been improved. My question is to Mr. Dunn.
To me, please, sorry.
Anybody. What kind of vegetation and what kind of change is going to happen? Because my area is a hill and it has a stone fence, stone wall that's been there forever. And I just want to make sure that, that there's no undermining and having my hill collapse.
Sure, so, but I'll, I'll try and answer this, Mr. Dunn, if I say something wrong, you can correct me.
Go right ahead.
If you want to zoom out a little bit there, the.
I, I just zoomed down to where her stone wall is.
Okay, so the, the limit of work is that above, you see the dotted area there, which is the turtle habitat?
Yeah.
There's a line going all the way there above it?
Yeah.
That's the limit of where he's doing any work in this proposal, so nothing below that is, is being touched at all.
Okay, because I've let, through the years, I've been there since 1972. I've let the trees and the bushes on my part of the property grow in case something happened. I didn't want to have them in my backyard. The nesting area has improved it, which I'm grateful for. I have another question. The easement, the small easement in between my property.
Yeah.
One twelve and I think one ten. Someone mentioned something about the abutters being able to maybe purchase this.
That was going back to the original discussion four years ago. The, at the time, the abutters wanted to do that.
Yeah.
So the applicant had said, once the water pipe, the water department wants them to loop the water line. So instead of one pipe going in and one pipe going out, they want it to do a loop. So once they tie off that loop on South Worcester, as long as they have an easement to fix the pipe if they ever need to, they don't need that finger of land.
Correct.
They're happy to sell it to whoever wants it from the abutters.
Okay, and who gets in touch with the abutters? I just don't want all of a sudden having someone say, it's too late, you can't buy it.
We can, we'll have, when that time comes, we'll have the applicant's attorney, Dan Vieira, be in touch with the, the abutters.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I guess that is all that I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize for not turning around and seeing you there for a second.
It's going to hit you.
Okay. So we've given Mr. Dunn a few things in terms of homework here. Is there anything else that we want to state prior to continuing, as he's been continued with conservation? And we've given him additional things that would potentially complicate those reviews. Is there anything else that we want to request of him at this time? And if otherwise, I would look to continue.
Motion to continue. Second.
Okay. So, so, Mr. Dunn, based on the work that you have with us and with conservation, this board has two meetings in July, which I believe are the, I am losing track of my mind here.
Why sixteen?
The sixteenth and then the.
Well, don't, don't do that, because we need it.
Well, I believe our meetings are the sixteenth and the thirtieth, am I correct?
Correct.
Do you have a preference between the two? Would you prefer the thirtieth, so the year further out?
Let me look at the swatch watch here. Sixteenth to the thirtieth. I think the sixteenth might be a, a call order. So can we go to the thirtieth, please?
Understood. Motion to continue to the thirtieth, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of continuing to July the thirtieth? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Okay, so we are continuing to the thirtieth. Thank you as always, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you very much for having me, have a great night, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we have two more item, one more item on our agenda tonight, which was just the review of Crane Street, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes. Paul, are you able to log in yet, or do we have? I know my computer has died. Laura, do you have the ability to share?
I do, what do you mean?
The Crane Street decision, if we wanted to review that?
We do, somebody can send it to me.
Okay.
My, I should be okay if we do it quick.
Okay. I'll ask separately, has anybody reviewed the Crane Street decision? Has anybody had any questions? Is that a no to questions or a no to?
No, no to questions.
Okay, just making sure. Next, all children.
It was fair, you asked your questions and we said no to them.
That's fair, yeah, so that's on me. That's okay. Is there anything else that we, do we have questions, concerns in terms of what was in the decision? Or are we fine moving forward?
Fine moving forward.
Okay. Paul, were there any specific pieces of the decision that you were concerned about, or you wanted to make sure that we reviewed?
I'm not concerned about, but there were some conditions that are part of the removal that were listed in the bylaw that I've flagged, just so you know where it's coming from. But there were a couple of things that we need you to weigh in on.
Okay.
Like, for example, the bylaw does say that, now, here we go, the frequency of, of trucks leaving the premises shall be established by the planning board as part of the conditions of the special permit, but in no case shall it be greater than one every three minutes.
So that's a limit on how fast a dump, how many dump trucks can leave the premises?
Right, how often.
And that's required by us to set by bylaw?
Yes.
Okay, so the draft decision has the no greater than three, every three minutes?
Right, I, I would stick with three minutes, might, might as well let them complete their job as quick as they can.
Okay.
I don't, they don't.
Any objections?
No.
Okay.
Next, I, following your, your, your condition to direct traffic toward Mile Standish, I've just put a condition in that says that trucks used to haul material to and from the site must use Crane Hill and Mile Standish Boulevard, and that signs must be placed at the construction entrances for lots A and B directing traffic, drivers to turn right on the Pine Street and on Lot D, which is on Crane Street, that they turn left onto Crane to get out to Hill and then Mile Standish.
Go this way to the highway, thank you.
Yeah, to town. And then there was also, you all had asked regarding, or a condition for street sweeping. There's a street sweeping condition in the order of conditions that I've put in here. I guess my question to you all is, do you want this or trust that it's in the order of conditions? Either way is fine.
If it's in the order of conditions, I don't think we have to do it twice.
I mean, that has never stopped our, our board from duplicating language in an order of conditions.
That's true, let's kill more trees.
Us weasel, and we've fixed on it.
I mean, I don't have the objection keeping in. It's five lines of text.
Yeah, fine, it's already written. And then the last one, it's regarding, well, I have it in here, I have to find it. But for the common driveway, what type of material should it be? Gravel or fully, fully paved? And I need to find, oh, I just put it as shall be paved for the entire length of the driveway. The applicant had said they didn't really care one way or the other, but you could, you could make them pave it the entire way, you could make it a gravel for the common driveway.
I would think it should just be paved and finished. A bunch of ruts are going to cause problems, who's going to fix the ruts?
I, I've put, I've just drafted it as the.
I'm sorry, are we talking about construction?
No, construction of the, the materials used to construct the, the common driveway.
The final driveway.
Battery construction.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about earth removal special.
No, sorry, that, this is, this was it.
So paved.
That one's the way it wouldn't be paved, yeah?
Paved, absolutely.
Okay, but they're not pushing for gravel. It's a little bit more impervious.
And I should point out too, regarding the direction of traffic, I have asked Chief Clark, there's actually a requirement in the bylaw, I said, that the police chief has to sign off on it. I will follow up with him again and just make sure he's okay with this.
Sending trucks away from people?
We are talking a lot of trucks. Twenty-two thousand divided by. They were heading to Dyne, didn't they say they wanted to go through Mile Standish? I believe so. Because they were heading to Dyne, I thought.
They were fine, they were fine.
Whatever we said, they were going.
Okay. So is that, is that everything?
Yeah, I've tapped the hours, oh, also the hours of operation, I had, you all said, use the hours of operations that we use.
For construction, Pine Street.
Yes, for Pine Street, so I, I just pulled it from that. And the hours of operation for construction and earth removal activity shall be permitted between the hours of seven AM to dusk or seven PM, whichever is earlier, Monday through Friday, and Saturday eight to four. The hours may be varied with approval from the building commissioner. At no time will construction activity occur on Sundays and holidays unless approval is granted by the building commissioner, which, that's pretty standard. Oh, a couple of other things, just to make sure. That the applicant should work with the highway, shall work with the highway department, police department to identify the locations of signs warning drivers of the construction entrances, especially with the blind spot on Pine Street. And then the, for earth removal, it says a special permit for earth removal shall be issued for an initial period of one year. One renewal permit for an earth removal operation may be issued by the board as an extension of the original permit without a new period.
Okay.
Then the last part is they do, prior to commencing earth removal, they do need to submit a performance bond to us. So they will have to. they do need to submit a performance bond to us. So they will have to come back for surety, and this is right straight out of the bylaw.
Okay.
We didn't discuss that, right?
We did not.
But it, it's a bylaw requirement, so.
Yes.
They didn't ask for any relief for it, so it stands. And then.
Right, and they have to provide as-built plans and.
Yeah.
Probably should mention that verbally or an email also, rather than just in the condition.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll reach out, back out to them.
Say, just so you know, this is in the bylaws.
I, I know I communicated this to them, but I'll follow up.
It, it seems like a complicated ownership situation. So, that makes sense. Okay. So is that all that we had on Crane Street?
Yes.
Okay. So that's all the items posted on our agenda, additional things. So Paul, as of this point, we have nothing for our July sixteenth meeting, correct?
Correct, uh, because the only thing that was continued was till the thirtieth.
Did you have, did you want to talk before?
I have one, yes.
Right, but we don't.
Nothing else was continued.
Nothing else was continued, so we don't have any new items. I mean, it's always possible that an A and R will come along, but.
So.
We don't.
I just meant on the board, you know, excuse me.
Oh, that's, that would, I, there's an item, uh, to present to you, but we wouldn't just convene for that.
Okay, so potential the next meeting will be canceled?
Some vacation?
Potent. Um, for our next session on the thirtieth, or to your continued waiting, River Two, um, I'm also going to, um, ask that we have a short executive session to discuss Condyne. Uh, the remand slash appeal for that property. Um, the applicant reached out with a potential additional proposal related to that project. So we should be able to discuss it. We've had an email with town council. They are fine with us discussing it amongst ourselves, without them. So it should be, we'll do it at the end of our session. We'll say, public, your, public meeting is closed. Everything shuts down, and then we talk for five or ten minutes, and then we all go home.
Don't put a time frame on it.
Never say that. What did we talk about last time?
I made rules for executive session.
Okay, so, I think, I think I'm pretty good on this one. So.
Famous last.
So that will be, so we can do that in our next session, and we'll do that on the thirtieth, if it is our next session. If we do have something on the sixteenth, then I guess we can do it, but we will, the word that we will pass back to Condyne is, looks like it will be discussed at the thirtieth.
Sounds good.
Something else, I'm just wondering, and maybe Paul O'Brien can tell me how to do it, if it's possible. Is there a way, prior to Paul's memo, or prior to the agenda going out, to, on open.gov to see when a meeting is scheduled for? So if I, if we can look ahead, you know, like if it's a Tuesday before and I, we have a meeting the following week, is there a way to know what's on that next meeting? You know what I'm saying?
We can, we can always, um, send it. We've been typically sending out the material and posting the agenda the Thursday.
Thursday, I'm just saying, is there a way.
We could do it earlier.
No, I'm not saying do it earlier. Is there a way, is there?
Is there any open gov that does a.
Exactly, is there somewhere on open gov where you put it that we can see?
Yeah, where it's tentatively scheduled.
Exactly.
We can ask, but, um, as we've, know right now, we don't.
I could have easily missed it, and I'm not the best computer guy, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah. I, I don't know if open gov, you say like, we've scheduled this for the sixteenth, and we could pull up like.
I'm just wondering.
Scheduled on what dates, like, column in the system, yeah.
Not that there's a ton in there right now, but whether there's more.
It's not so much posting an agenda, it's just seeing, is there a, this, this application will next be heard on what date?
Oh, we're tentatively looking at.
And then you would just be able to sort by date and say, these are the applications on next day.
Exactly.
That's what you're, you're not looking for.
I'm not looking for any more, I'm just, is there some way to do that? That's all it exists.
Yeah. We don't know, would you put this stuff in open gov, do you say, this'll be on this agenda, or this date? If it's not in there, that is not it.
Yeah, exactly. We, we used to, with permit eyes.
Is that what I remember it from? I remember it.
You could, yeah, yeah.
So, that's, that's the question.
We haven't seen any dates, but we can ask.
We can see, we could look at that and see if the workflow can add dates to it.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a question, yeah.
Am I safe to log off soon?
Um.
We don't need to hear anything else.
Why don't we just wait till we can?
Okay.
Is there anything else to discuss?
Um, is the, next one, chance of the third, is it light enough that might be worth talking about, uh, like October dates and stuff? We're here at that point. I don't know, just a recommendation, we can start talking about dates at that point.
I think future meeting dates is a good thing for the thirtieth as well. Cause right now we just have the one thing and, yeah, so.
And there's not, there's not a lot in there, right? There's not a lot of new applications that I've seen, right? Looks kinda, we don't have any.
We don't have any new applications at this time, but, um, one should be coming this week on Hill Street. So that's coming, and we may be seeing another one on South Washington soon. We've just had some preliminary meetings.
The one in front of the select board.
A little bit friendly?
No, no, not, well, um, there's that one too, yes, I'm sorry, there is that. That, you wouldn't see anyway, because that would be a forty-B.
Yeah, that's right, they kept referring to planning board, that's why I wasn't sure what.
Yeah, no, no, uh, but that.
Town boards are know what they do.
So we've had, we've had a couple of, of preliminary meetings with, uh, in this case, both of them were, are in industrial zoning. So, but yeah, there's a proposal for a friendly forty-B, uh, that was in front of the select board on Newland Street. They didn't take action, although there seemed to be relative agreement with it.
Okay.
If they go forward, that goes through CBA, but, um, that's, yeah.
Sounds probably, understood.
Mm-hmm. Dump it out, Tom.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Saying adjourn.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Thank you very much, everybody.